Are we back?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, we're back from executive session. No action taken. Do you have Tammy's?
Hey, we're ready. You've got a handy dandy phone over there.
I didn't have her extension.
Yes, you have everybody's extension. You go to directory?
Yeah, I forgot I had the directory.
Directory? You go to the network contact.
These are the same year. I want it like last year and the year before.
Oh, they're the same year. Okay, I didn't look at it.
Well, everything's the same, yeah.
Okay.
Network contacts.
Hi, Tammy. Good morning. That's everybody.
It's so funny.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. I'm here all day.
Well, good. You can be my secretary.
Okay, Tammy Robinson, Finance Director. I sent out purchasing card policy and procedures for your review last week. Do you have any questions, comments, concerns?
With the old card, do you want us to bring those back in?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. If you can turn those back in. And then we're having some training with the administrators on Wednesday this week. And so that'll be with the system to show them how to do their transactions in the transaction envelopes. And then that same day and the following day, we're going to train with all employees on the system, purchasing card policy, so that everybody's aware of expectations and answer any questions they may have. And then we'll hand out cards and we'll start rolling with the new program. The plan is, so the commissioners, if you have cards, if you want to speak with Jamie, she'll get you enrolled in one of the sessions that's convenient for you to come in and go through. I have a spot on the back. If you guys go ahead and motion to approve this for you all to sign.
I didn't see any issues with that, did you guys?
I'll make the motion. Sign.
Go in favor. Oh, same sign. You all sign that? Oh, yeah, you guys can keep that as per reference if there's anything.
So that will everybody that has part of it have it?
So what we'll end up doing is sending... No, you are. We'll send them out to all the departments so that they'll have them on file there. And hopefully they have like a shared drive or something, or they can print them out to the employees, whichever works for them. But yeah, we'll certainly have them in our office as well. But yeah, the expectation is for them to be able to go through them. We'll send them out today for them to be able to go through them prior to the training. That way we can answer any questions should there be any.
Betsy, you reviewed all of this, huh?
Travelers. Good.
We went through the training in our office the other day. It was been training, so pretty comfortable with the system. So I think it'll work out pretty good. Information's good. And we did do a spot training with a couple of them from Community Corrections because they couldn't make it to these scheduled ones. And so they were our guinea pigs for the first training on the card, being aware of what the card policies and procedures are. The only other thing that I wanted to mention is after last week's meeting, we did present a partial check to the city for the EMS services. And so that went to them on Wednesday, Tuesday afternoon or Wednesday.
It went on Tuesday.
Afternoon.
It was, I think we should explain. It wasn't really a partial payment. It was a payment based on the capital.
Well, so they sent three bills and their three bills equated to more than what we paid based on calculation that I did with the wages. There are, there was supposed to be based on the union contract, 5% increase. And the calculations of the information I received, it appeared that it was that they had like a 12% increase in wages. And so we adjusted for a 5% increase in wages. And that's what we were prepared to pay them based on what that union contract said. And until we have further discussions on the numbers that they presented. Because there's not enough detail for me to ascertain that difference.
Did they say why it was? I mean, I know, didn't you ask questions?
We sent information on discovery and so we have gotten some information back. But one of the reports that we had was a lot less than the actual bill we had as well. And those are questions that we have that I think that we're presenting to their side. So Peter has those right now and is reviewing. And then there were also several questions on specific expenses in the three Cs, contractual, commodity, capital, hourly, that we would like specific invoices for us to review prior to issuing payment on those. So, so we paid what we could deem was an accurate amount based on the union contract at this point and did not pay on the three Cs because of the things that are sitting out there that we need invoices to go through.
Well, continue to ask questions and make sure the judge knows that. Because I mean, if they're not answering our questions, I don't know.
Who's the, I mean, because I know Lindsey's gone.
Yeah, who are you dealing with?
So I'm going through the attorneys right now because of...
That was sort of Mr., when she hadn't heard back, we contacted, I contacted Mr. Spites and asked who she should drag questions to. And he said for now.
Him?
They can go through him.
Okay.
And they had, the meeting last week was a scheduling conference. So I think we set some scheduling deadlines for discovery and the issue will be in September.
And so definitively, we don't know that those three Cs, commodity, contractual, and capital, hourly, won't be paid. It's just right now we need more information to review them to determine that the breakout of them makes sense based on what the current, in our local agreement is.
Okay. Well, that makes sense. I'm fine with that. I mean, if our numbers aren't matching with theirs, then I feel we should just pay and show how we came to that number, which is what we did. And then we can go from there.
Right. But I did want to let you know that that did go out in case you had any questions or were wanting, somebody was wanting to know how we had come up with that amount. It was based on the union contract and what it said and what we paid in '23 versus what was being paid in '24.
Sure.
And then we paid the KPNF and Medicare because those are based on the wage dollar amounts. So that calculation is easy. The insurance side and not knowing unemployment rate, those are all. And work comp is another one that we would like to see the breakout. When you have employees that do both EMS and fire, I don't know how they're determining because those are two different grades in work comp. So I don't know how they're paying their work comp rates. I'm assuming they have to pay it based on the most risky, the highest rated.
Sure.
But I don't know that for sure without seeing more detail. And so that's what we're wanting to look at to determine on those. Okay, and I sent you some information on budget a couple of weeks ago. And that is on where we were in '23. And it showed you where we had our budget set and how much was used or unused in the budgets. And also did that for wage, for the wages also, so you could review. Use that as a tool as we move forward with presentations. They start next week on the 10th. I will be out of the office that day. The ones that come in that day will all be outside entities. And so they'll just be basically presenting their information. And no decisions will be made until we get our valuation and you get everything in front of you and see the impact to determine how you want to move forward. So are there any questions on that?
I was wondering if you could send an email to all the appropriation people and ask them if they would bring any grants that they have applied for and proceed whether or not, but any grants that they've received or applied for, not just received, but applied.
Do you also ask for like any fundraising events that they do or anything like that? Would you like?
I'd like that too.
Because that is going to be important because I did send you that information as well as far as what has been asked for.
Yeah.
And you can see. More than last year's requests is.
Yeah, an increase of 1.4 million.
Yeah, which is a lot.
It is a lot.
So yeah, I think that's definitely something that we'll be aware of as we move forward with the valuation.
I think we need to, you know, they can't be dependent on the taxpayer money. They need to be proactive and trying to bridge their money as well.
We, I mean, I can't remember how many letters of support, you know, to give last year. It's not like, it's not like we're giving no calls. We're not even, I don't think we're getting calls to reach out to, you know, state representatives or the federal representatives to even get their support on certain grants and different ones like that. So yeah, it'd be good to know what they're doing on the background if down there with the Tennessee funds.
Yeah. We are also working with TAG on the sheriff stuff. And so some information will be coming to you shortly on that. And I think I sent you out some preliminary data just so you had it, information to review in looking at those items. And I think the sheriff's office will probably have some additional reporting that they'll bring in to you on that. Is there anything else on the budget that you would like or need before I go on Friday? Louisa should, if you don't have your binders, she has your binders and she'll be bringing those to you for your review.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Okay, year-to-date fires were at 49. Same period last year was 64. We ran a total of seven calls in the month of May, nothing real major. For the past two to three months, Kurt and I, along with our captains, lieutenants, have been looking at and revising our SOG or our handbook for our volunteer firefighters. We made a whole bunch of revisions in it, sent it over to HR here. They looked at it and then we sent it to the Insurance Commissioner's Office because of the Fireman's Relief Association card in there. We had four meetings last week with all of our volunteers. We got all but, I think, eight of them in for the training, which is pretty good considering 60 people. So one of the big changes in it was we defined what an active firefighter is. Because we had guys that would come out once every five years on a fire and they'd get that FRA money. Well, no more. They go to attend training, get so many calls each year and stuff. And so that's some changes that will be taking place. And if you guys want to see a copy of the book or a warrant copy of the handbook, we'll be glad to hand that to you. But we really didn't hear much problems from any of the guys because they understand where we're coming from, liability and stuff too, so.
Does HR have a copy of it no longer?
She's got a copy. We've got to get her a corrected copy now that we've got everything done and stuff. So, but Crystal was real happy with working with us on that and liked what we did on it. Updates on our three fire stations. Survey work's been completed at number four, Bar Road, and also number five, Davis Creek, Clark's Creek area. He's working on Humboldt Creek area right now. And then we'll start getting going on that now that we got the budget done. We met with a guy who's been doing all of our other stations because station number four during that addition can be a little bit different because Bay Four or Station Four sits up kind of high anyway. You got to back up a little rise. And the other ones, there's a drop off. So we're looking how to set that building in there. So we've got some ideas, so we'll be working on that. And I'll start working with Tammy on getting the paperwork started for the, all that paperwork for USDA and stuff. So Sunday morning weather, yesterday morning's weather. We got called out, the idea along with city fire and also law enforcement on 040 Highway, across from Munson's, got their pond. We had a big water come across, flooded that stream through there. Somebody decided to try to drive through there, ended up getting their car stranded. The water was about three to four feet deep through there at the time. It receded enough by the time fire department got out there. They were able to walk out there with safety lines attached to him, bringing the guy back to safety. I don't know if we need to put some signs out there because that seems to be a common occurrence in time we get a whole bunch of hot water. That's one of our problem spots, so I don't know. I haven't talked to Cory yet this morning.
No. I don't either.
No, no, we'll still go through there.
Well, sometimes it depends on what it is. Sometimes I put up barricades.
They've got barricades like on Clark's Creek. And, but they've also got the signs that say flooded, flood area ahead. I think if we maybe do that and then people anticipate it. Because the one on Clark's Creek, when I got done out there, I went and checked Clark's Creek for public works because they were coming out looking and stuff too. That one had a whole bunch of big logs and it ended up taking a backhoe out there and was move those logs out of the way. But we know that one floods all the time because of the drainage ditch. But this one seems to be more of a problem the last couple of years. I don't know what's causing that out there. So next week.
I mean, Simon's is good from the aspect of covering ourselves and some of that liability. But it does make sense to play. That's not enough, but.
They're really counting it two times. Somebody recruited Randy Paulson to run a barricade recently.
Yeah. You can't fix certain people. Earlier this year, you guys approved the CIP project for the outdoor warning siren at Thunderbird Marina, the West Ryan Hills area. All that's gone in. They're looking at installing that probably next week, weather permitting, and how they've come along with all their other projects that they're doing. So when that gets done, all of our, majority of our lake area, especially where we've got federal and state properties there will be covered along with our housing areas out around the lake. So, but you know, when that finished up. Last week, we told you that we would have Potawatomi County officials here. We had six of their people come down. And we spent about an hour and a half talking about their response when the tornado hit, the good and the bad and any improvements they could have done. It was a very worthwhile deal for a lot of our department heads, especially the new ones to see. It was kind of chaotic, they said and stuff, but they got everything done. They all worked together. Next week, we're doing a tabletop exercise on the tornado strike in Gary County. Working on putting that together this week. So that'll be next Wednesday afternoon. And we've got a whole bunch of those same players coming to that. We've also got our nursing homes involved, the hospital, Claude County Community College. So it's going to be a good, good exercise, I hope. I think that's pretty well it today. I will be out of the state Friday through late Sunday night. So Kurt will be in charge, so that's what I say. He can handle it. If he needs help, he'll call you, Alex.
All right.
Okay.
Are we ready?
Okay.
All right, Rich, run.
Get your waders out.
Got a ridge.
Throw a line on there.
No, no lines.
If it's that night, I just put my arm out and do a flashlight.
You just could, you just hang out the window and howl. That's what you do, yeah. Gives you your sire.
Okay.
Anything for us?
Nope.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Cory, watch me in right on time.
Thank you, Sid. I don't like those. Want a dog? Just three.
No, thanks. Three? Almost did a job. Always thinking of my hand.
Yeah.
Let's do this one. Thank you.
You're up.
Sorry. Can you see this okay?
You got bid openings at 11. You want me to go ahead and start on something else till we get there?
You're on three minutes. You want to get through with something else in three minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Doubt it. All right. I play this game.
Okay. Detention center cell block B2, the block walls that got damaged because the inmate was slamming. Those got repaired last week by Hartman Missionary. Everything looked good. Just have to wait a little, a little while to let it cure out, so. Real quick, I'm still waiting on a cost for Siemens for them to come down and assess this fire alarm system over at the detention center. I wanted to give you an example of what the officers that are sitting in that operations center for 12 hours a shift have to listen to.
It never shuts off?
It never stops.
And is there nothing else that we can do to cut that off?
Have Siemens come down and fix what's causing the problem, which is bad smokes. Stop. They sit there for 12 hours and they listen to that.
Yeah, I don't think that.
So I did, I did, they did submit a proposal to upgrade the entire thing for $82,000. But it seems like they came down three or four times last year and it was $25,000, $3,000 every time they showed up because they have to see what smokes they need to replace. But I guess with that, if they replace five or six smokes, that's five or six less they have to on the back end. But it just seems like as soon as they leave, you know, according to Major Anderson, it's within 30 minutes that the alarm comes back on. But, I mean, they can only assess what's causing the faults and replace what's causing the faults at that time. So, but I'm still waiting on a cost from Siemens for trip charge and stuff. But I'll probably reach out when they get back with me, so. Just wanted to give you an example of that.
11.
11, okay. Public Works, two pickups, sealed bids. We received three bids for this. At least there's three envelopes. There might be four, depends on what they bid. I was contacted by Dave with Master Tech Friday afternoon, late. It was about 3:45. And he said that he was just west of Strong City, heading my way with his bid packet. And he said, there's no way I can get there by 4:30. 4:30 was the cutoff time. And I was like, should have left 20 minutes earlier. I don't know what to tell you. So I said, if you can get here before 4:30, we'll open on Monday. If not, so he turned around and went back to Wichita. So with that, the first one is going to be from Shawnee Mission Ford. Both figures. Double sealed. I'm just going to read off the total of two units. What is that? I don't know, I can't make it out. I can't make it out. He's got a total of two units, $96,034 for chassis and then $24,262 under that. And I can't make out his handwriting.
He said 24 what?
262. Delivery date, six to eight months. I have no idea what that is. We'll have to clarify. Looks like nap hide after murder bed.
Yeah, instead of Brad.
Okay, in the bid packet, we did specify Bradford built steel work bed, flat bed with a headache rack. And I think he's quoting a different bed is what that 24, 262 would be, I'm assuming. So. And it doesn't say for what kind of pickup. I'm assuming it's Ford. Yeah, anyway. Next one would be from Ballard Ford. And this has got a total for two units at $129,334. 129, 334.00. Delivery date, 90 to 120 days, barring no plant or commodity issues with ordering date. This would be for a Ford pickup. So at least that's what the brochure, information in the brochure says. So at least that's what the brochure, information in the brochure says. Next one would be from Glavenford, a police center. This would be for Ford pickup. And he's got a total for two, two pickups at a hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars and zero cents. One two zero, eight two zero for two units. And delivery date dependent on order commitment. With that, we'll take these back, review them and give a recommendation at a later time. Next thing I'd like to talk about would be the gravel road, uh, speed limits that we discussed, uh, in previous meeting here a while back. Had Jeremy reach out to Keith Browning with, uh, KCHA and he said K-State did a, a study several years ago when I, uh, sent that to you in one of my action items to look at, to review. Um, they found that the speed limits on gravel roads are not effective. People drive at a comfortable speed, no matter what the speed limit is, uh, as discussed in that article. And Johnson County is the only county of which he is aware of that the speed limits on gravels are posted thirty-five miles an hour. All the rest of them that he's aware of are unposted at fifty-five. Um, and again, this is just gravel roads. So, um, but again, in that article, it basically says that it just does not appear to be effective. And, uh, he thinks that the lack of, of enforcement, uh, would be a, a problem in most counties because the sheriff's department just don't have the resources available to patrol county roads. So with, with that being said, um, if you look at the cost of, of, uh, the signing it's gonna take to just do section seven and eight. We're, we reached out, we got three different quotes for the signs and national sign company. And this is signs plus the posts and the stubs, uh, for eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And that's just for two sections. We got eight sections total. So if you basically multiply that, it's going to be pretty high dollar to do the entire county to post it. So, um, open for discussion.
Well, I had just, I was in Mountford, uh, last weekend and I had a couple of people ask on their road, um, Lakeview, Lakeview Road, they, um, so I.
And I, I was born and raised on a gravel road and to me, there's gravel road etiquette. When you see somebody coming, you slow down and get over. But when they blow by you at forty and fifty mile an hour, I get angry and I always grab a handful of rocks and hit their windshield with it. So it's just a lot of people don't, don't have that etiquette or common sense, I guess. Um, but I would think that the rural farmers would appreciate lower speed limits, um, I would think. Um, but, uh, it's going to be extremely costly if we do the entire county over a period of three, four years. So. But with, with that being said, I think that by resolution, the commission can pick whatever road they deem necessary to lower speed limits on.
That's fifteen sixty-eight. Says that local authorities who have jurisdiction over county or township highways may determine based on an engineering and traffic investigation or without an engineering and traffic investigation. The proper maximum speed for such county or township highways and shall declare reasonable and safe maximum speed limit thereon, which may be greater or less than the maximum speed limit permitted under this act. Except that no event shall any local authority establish a maximum speed limit in excess of six to five miles per hour. So I was then made the impression that we had to have a study, but, um.
But we did that on old thirteen, weren't due to one seventy-seven construction.
Yeah. Well, there was multiple roads that were done and some of the roads that are, uh, in, in those sections, they're already signed. We left thirty-five mile an hour out due to the construction project. They're still up. And, uh, so those roads were figured into this resolution right behind this, this deal here. So, um, but yeah, if the commission would rather pick and choose, I don't say pick and choose, but deem what roads probably have more residential on it. Like, you know, Lakeview Terrace, Quarry Road, things like that where there's just multiple residentials. Uh, it's like Quarry Road's really stacked up there in that one half mile. So you get somebody traveling at fifty-five mile an hour down through there and, you know, to me, it's more, it's rural, but it's, there's a lot of residential out there. So.
Sure.
But yeah.
What do we want to do? Is that what it's for, by residents or if people want to come forward and, you know? Cause I remember when we lowered the, the speed limit, we got some, uh, people upset about that.
That was on a block.
You know, I just don't want to go and change people's speed limits if they're happy with what it is. And, you know, so if people want to make an effort and get, you know, petitions in their area and come forward to us, I would be more than happy to do that. I just, you know, I, I, I think it should be plugged up to the residents of the neighborhoods.
Yeah. I think, uh, when we did it for, for the last row, it was all because of the traffic.
Yeah, but, but we got some complaints about it. So I don't want to go picking and choosing unless somebody has an issue with it.
No, I would think that would be discussed.
Yeah.
Cause I know we did have, um, on Hillside, um, we had received several, uh, complaints about the, the, uh, speed limit on there. So.
Okay. Well, we'll leave it at that then. So we will remove the signage that is out in, uh, sections seven and eight. I didn't want to go out there and remove them just to turn around a few months later and put them back up again. So they're still, they're still on.
So you're gonna leave them?
No, we'll take them down. They were only placed just for that construction. Well, I left them up just because I didn't want to turn around and replace, you know, put them back up again. That won't work. So. But they were just put up for for the construction on K one seventy-seven. Cause if you want me to leave them up, we'll have to do a resolution just for those roads that are signed now. But then, you know, you're doing some of them. The money's already spent. The signs are already out.
I know. I mean, we do a resolution. Leave that the way it is. The last time I was out there on that. I think I wound up one beatable that day. It weren't going very fast. But I think it was just performance.
Yeah. Well, also a good, good point to bring up about gravel road speed. The faster vehicle drives down those roads, they're driving on loose gravel, which in turn is getting flung in the ditch. You know, and if you get heavier equipment doing it, trucks and so on, so forth, more rock, the rock needs to be on the road instead of being flung in the ditch. So. Um, but to me, it's, it's safer for all if the speed limits are, if they do drive at a reasonable, prudent speed, it might be. But.
Well, my thought is we did a resolution to that. Leave them. My fellow, going on that's a good case.
What location?
I don't know.
Do you think that's fine? I think it.
A year.
A year, yeah. A little over a year, I think. Okay.
So that was that first resolution.
Yeah.
So we can do that as well.
Okay. Um, next thing would be the sheriff's office, uh, the air quality testing that was performed. That K-Work, uh, got going for us. In that report, I ain't gonna bore you with all the details of the thing. But, uh, the main meat is on page four of the report. Cleaning permeable surfaces throughout the administrative office area, uh, by high efficiency particulate, the HEPA vacuuming and damp wiping. Uh, everything down with the household cleaner. This includes surfaces such as steel, structural steel, ceiling tile grids, piping, light fixtures and HVAC equipment. We're currently trying to find a company that, that can do that. We've reached out to a couple of cleaning contractors here locally. They don't go that in depth into, uh, disinfecting. But there are some items here that building maintenance, uh, has already begun doing. Uh, ceiling diffusers and grills, uh, basically cleaning all them. And then they're also working on, uh, discarding all of the water impacted ceiling tiles. And then they're also going to plan on removing the, uh, that last bullet, remove the impacted pipe wrap above in the ceiling in the admin office area. Um, with that, I kind of wanted to get the ball rolling on the ceiling tiles. Uh, so I reached out to commission chair and, uh, she pre-approved us to go ahead and get these ordered so we can get them in and get them replaced out. But there's a total of three hundred and forty-four ceiling tiles and we priced these from Home Depot and that come up to one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars, twenty-five cents. Uh, Waters here locally was two thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars, fifty-seven cents. And then the lowest cost was from Menards, um, which one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixteen cents, which that cost would come out of the facility fund. But, uh, recommend the commission to go ahead and approve of us purchasing these ceiling tiles so we can get them changed out, which we've already got them on board. So.
Never? Close the inside.
Thank you. Um, any questions on that report? Honestly, it was better news than what I was expecting.
I know.
What did that cost you?
Uh, five, fifty-six hundred dollars, I think.
Yeah.
I think it was fifty-six hundred for the whole thing. Uh, K-Work's gonna be paying, paying the county a thousand back for that. So. Like in total, out of the county's pockets, it's gonna be forty-six hundred dollars. Okay, next thing would be, uh, the bridge project down on West Lanskirk Road, uh, Cobb Valley Engineering. We've been battling back and forth with this, um, change order. Uh, but, uh, the, that professional service agreement for design was forty thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars, twenty cents. That's basically for them to design the bridge, um, so on and so forth. Um, but in that, they, there's a line on there, number six, where it's proposed right away staking legal descriptions, blah, blah, blah. They didn't have no dollars documented there for that. Um, and kind of after the fact is when we found out we need right away, uh, state to show the, the, uh, it was Mr. Kind who it was basically, but we needed to have that right away state. So he fully knew what, what property he was gonna be losing. Um, and basically it came back as five hundred dollars. So with that, to get this all wrapped up, uh, that five hundred dollars is over that set cost in this agreement. Um, now keep in mind that on the agreement between Cobb Valley and the county for construction engineering, that's construction inspection, they came in a hundred and eighty-four dollars and twenty-five cents below what they quoted. So, um, but I would recommend the commission to approve this request so we can complete the final billing, billing so we could seek reimbursement from K-DOP for a hundred and fifty thousand.
On favor?
And that'd be a special bridge. Okay. Detention Center cell number twenty-nine. Uh, we was advised last Wednesday, Wednesday that this door was stuck in the open position and it couldn't be closed. Um, it's, uh, it's one of the sliding doors, not the ones that open up. They're on that track that slides. Uh, Willow proposed an amount of three thousand, five hundred dollars, which I reached out to commission chair and she pre-approved it, uh, last Friday. So we can get this on the schedule to get them up there because the cell can't be used without the door operating. So I'd recommend the commission to approve of this thirty-five hundred dollars from facility fund. Keep in mind that this is, it's basically an eight hour site visit. So it might come in lower. But then again, when parts are figured in, it might be coming in higher. So they don't know. They kind of did a tag team on the phone last week to try it. So the tech knows kind of what the issue is. So hopefully he's bringing the amount of parts he needs to get the door where it's working. So. Um, but, uh, they will supply any parts as needed at a ten percent discount. So, um, but I would recommend commission approval for the thirty-five hundred dollars for Willow to go out and get the door fixed.
So man.
On favor? Close the inside. What she carries.
You guys want to hear the beeping again?
No.
I had to ask.
Can you just put some masking tape over it or is it coming out?
They've tried cotton balls. Yeah. Don't help nothing. Nothing. They tried to muffle it, but it don't, don't help.
They tried to do them?
Huh?
They tried to do them?
I think then the big alarm will go off. Okay. Uh, Jeremy reached out, um, to, uh, Outdoors Unlimited, the custom holiday lights for the Pennell Office Building. At least you asked for us to reach back out to him to get a, a proposed cost for doing that. Um, on Washington Street, um, the cost he gave was two thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars. And then we also told him to figure in a cost for Eighth Street. It's commission wanted to do it as well. So you have going down Eighth and then on Washington. Uh, the Eighth Street, uh, lights were two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars for a total of fifty-two hundred. Would the commission just want to do Washington Street, Main Street, or do they want to include that portion of Eighth Street as well? That's the big question.
Originally last year, when you guys approved this, you only approved the Main Street. I, I, I think for now, it may be possible.
I know. They want us to do side streets, but you're right.
Yeah, I went back and checked that. Yeah, I think just Main Street.
Okay. So you guys approved of the Washington Street for two thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars?
Yes.
And that'll be coming from the, paying for Economic Development Fund, oh eighteen?
That's where you approved it previously. Yes.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve it since it's.
It was approved.
It was approved?
Yeah, we were just waiting for, we just didn't.
Okay. Got you.
What, did you say the amount was four, two, three?
Two thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars. And then we'll reach back out to, out to, uh, Brad and get him going off for the weather turns cold, I guess.
He did mention he could have that done before fourth of July. He should be able to get on pretty quick. If it involves the lights, the colors.
Main Street does. Um, but if there's something that we want them to do, they'll do it.
Uh, Pennell Office Building, be the east back door, uh, the building. Uh, it's in pretty dire need of being replaced. It's pretty rusty. The, the steel door frame and the steel door is rusting pretty good. And we kind of want to get ahead, ahead of the ballgame on this, uh, before it comes detrimental to get it replaced ASAP. But we, uh, reached out and got three RFPs to, uh, replace this door and the steel frame. DH pays quoted a cost of three thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars. Door McCava, four thousand, sixty-six dollars and eighty-five, eighty-five cents. And then interstate glass amount was three thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars even. And that is the lowest quote we received. Uh, we did receive a quote from Kendall Construction at nine thousand, two hundred dollars. But that was to include a lot of, all of the finished work on the inside and exterior of the building, which both me and Jeremy feel the building maintenance can perform those tasks at a lot cheaper than contractors. So we would recommend the commission to award this to Interstate Glass at three thousand, four hundred. So we would recommend the commission to award this to Interstate Glass at three thousand four hundred fifty-eight dollars.
Any of your ADS costs?
Oh, yeah, and right behind that, that door is also equipped with ADS gave us a quote because it's got the secure fob entrance or that push button thing. They quoted a cost to basically take it off the old door and reinstall everything on the new door for one thousand five hundred eighty dollars and forty cents. And we'd asked commission to waive that purchasing policy and award this to ADS. So the total combined project with ADS and Interstate Glass would come out at five thousand thirty-eight dollars and forty cents.
Second.
On favor? Same sign, motion carries.
Next thing, sewer number four, lift station repair, May seventeenth. Smith Loveless did come up and they did replace that starter motor. And pump number two is back online. The commission approved the potential cost at two thousand thirty-nine dollars. And good news for a change, actual repair cost came back at one thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars. But, there's always a but, there's another issue. They discovered that the surge protector is bad and needs to be replaced. Currently waiting on costs from Shelley Electric for us to replace the circuit breaker, so. But at least the main cost for the it's back up and running and it was a little less cost than what was anticipated on that, so. Any questions on that? Okay, pergola out here, the concrete pad was poured last Thursday. So if you drive by and look at it, you've got it in before the monsoons hit. We got to let it sit for probably thirty days, let that concrete cure out before we go drill holes in it to set anchors for the pergola, so. I'm going to turn this over to Jeremy because this is in, he's been working on the approved CIP new backhoe purchase.
Yes, you guys had previously approved for that CIP of the new backhoe. Foley's Equipment had provided a quote for a twenty-twenty-four CAT four-twenty XE backhoe. This machine comes with a twelve-month standard warranty as well as an eighty-four-month, thirty-five-hundred-hour premier warranty. And that extended warranty portion is fifty-seven hundred dollars. Expected delivery of the machine would be the latter part of June or July, around the beginning of then. List price for this machine was two hundred and forty-seven thousand six hundred and forty-nine dollars with the Sourcewell government discount. Price came in at a hundred and eighty-three thousand four hundred and ninety-seven dollars with that premier warranty added in there. Foley's did come in a success. Our two thousand and eight CAT four-thirty E backhoe has six thousand eight hundred and seventy-two hours on it and has given a trade-in value of thirty thousand dollars on that. I guess we want to kind of discuss with the commission whether they want to trade that in to Foley's for that thirty thousand or sell that on Purple Wave. I think historically, it's kind of a gamble, but historically our Purple Wave sales have been a little bit better than what CAT has valued the equipment at. So it's kind of a roll of the dice.
It is. I think, I mean, I think there's a lot of other counties looking for equipment that, you know, might.
Well, you guys still is valuing it then.
Oh, me, I think it's over what they offered to trade in.
Yeah, I think Corey and I both agree that the Purple Wave deal, again, it's a risk, but
Right.
I think we would do a little bit better going that route.
I agree.
In the, like I said, just in our, the recent history of selling motor graders and, you know, that kind of equipment on Purple Wave, they came in higher than what Foley. Yeah.
Yeah, I think we should do that.
The way I look at it, it's also like trading in your vehicle at a dealership. You're, you're going to get more money out of it if you sell it outright. Versus dumping the dealer's line.
Are you allowed to put a reserve on it on Purple Wave?
I don't think you are.
I don't think so either.
No.
Based on how we used to use them.
There's other auction houses out there that you can set a reserve limit on them. But I don't believe Purple Wave has that reserve. I think they pride themselves in being no reserve auction.
Yeah.
I think it's flattered all over their internet.
And to date, we've sold two backhoes on Purple Wave previously and they both have brought pretty decent money. I think a couple of them kind of shocked us what they brought actually, but, you know, for as well-used as they were.
That old dozer from the landfill that brought more than I.
Yeah. The CAT one-twenty motor graders have brought good money and so I think.
Well, I think, I agree. Chris, you know, said other counties are always looking, townships, maybe, I don't know.
Yeah. So Purple Wave it is?
Purple Wave.
Okay, the approved CIP purchase for this backhoe was a hundred and twenty thousand. So we would request commission approve of a CIP amendment for sixty-three thousand four hundred and ninety-seven dollars for this purchase. We, our estimate cost of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars was a little bit off on this one, so. It is a bit higher. We've talked with Tammy about this. So that would, that would be what would be needed for that purchase is the difference of sixty-three thousand four hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
Another sixty-three on top?
Correct. Keep in mind that tobacco is going to sell on Purple Wave. It will offset some of that cost there.
Your motion to amend the CIP.
Do we act, well, are we, are we?
Do you have the money in there?
Yes.
Yeah, the, the money's in there.
Okay. I'm making a motion. I've been, I've been hoping that the thing still for like eighty-two, no.
I don't think so.
I got it. No, I know, second.
On favor? Same sign, motion carries.
Thank you. Turn it back over to Corey.
Oh, man. Public Works, we got a opportunity to purchase another stainless steel spreader for snow and ice removal. And that's through Master Tech Truck and Equipment. It's, it's through their overstock program discount. The MSRP on this spreader is thirty-six thousand three hundred and ten dollars. And they have proposed by going through this overstock discount program. Swenson's have a bunch of these spreaders overstocked and they, they need to get rid of them. So with us going through that program with Master Tech, we're looking at a savings of seventeen thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. And the commission did approve a purchase of a spreader like this last year. And you guys were in favor at that time if they, if we was able to get another one to jump on it. This is our chance. So, but this is twenty-twenty-four, so the total cost of this reduced unit is nineteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, the same cost as the one that was last year. So with that, Roden Bridge Capital Outlet Fund was used to purchase this spreader last year at twenty-three. But with the expense of the motor grader repairs we've had earlier this year and the purchase of that new laptop, if we buy this out of there, we're going to be in the red. So what I'd like to do is propose, propose, recommend to commission to waive the purchasing policy and to approve ten thousand dollars in, excuse me, ARPA funds. And then Roden Bridge Capital Outlet Line for nine thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. And that would leave approximately seven thousand one hundred and twenty dollars and forty-nine cents in Roden Bridge's capital outlet line for the remainder of this year.
I don't think we have any more of a fund.
Yeah, there's about forty-six.
I thought we were using some of that for offsetting CIP.
I mean, you were potentially. Yeah, we don't have anything definitive at this point for the forty-six.
So we can use that ten thousand?
The thing you were looking at is, and I guess you guys went and visited G I S.
Yeah, I didn't sorry that much because we're not moving, we're not moving a wall.
That was one of them.
That make that less. I personally wanted to put a wall and then make another, and then have a, have a reception, but they went ahead and we voted on, did Troy talk to you?
No, I talked to him last week at the department meeting. He said just come up and I've been.
Yeah, we're just going to put a wall up there and make another office and, and he's just going to move in that office. So, because I, I want, because if we ever have, need an office, that's, somebody's going to go over.
Right.
Because there's plenty of room.
There's plenty of room.
So, yeah, but it made no sense moving a wall.
Okay, I'll, I'll give it to Troy and figure out what we need to do, so.
So it's going to be much cheaper than what we thought.
Good.
So would it be best just to use, pay for it out of our, just that, you know?
Oh, I think the way he, um.
Yeah.
So originally, I, my recommendation was to try to absorb it completely in his budget.
Okay.
And so they asked this morning about whether they could do this half here and ask for ARPA and I said it was a fair request.
Okay.
I'll make the motion. Second.
On favor? Same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
You're done buying stuff for today.
Okay, okay. All right, well, thank you very much. And that, that would be, no, with purchasing this, this stainless steel spreader, it'll basically eliminate all of the steel ones that we're using now that rust out in the year.
They're rusted out.
So.
They'll put us in good shape.
It'll put us in good shape with the stainless steel spreaders, so. With that, want to start a little. We've been toying with, I don't want to say toying, but we've been looking at this dash camera trial. We got a little PowerPoint presentation. And this is basically anything from dash cameras to GPS tracking to lifetime data on basically seeing where our employees slash equipments are at any given time of the day. It's tracked. This first slide would be when the, when the last FEMA event, which was that one here that just got declared, that forty-seven seventy-four, we had to go out the old school way and basically get all of our information by having Roden Bridge Supervisor drive around with the administrative assistant. They spent five days doing this. And I kind of, because what we went through that last one back in nineteen, I had Thomas and Christina went out with them and they had to take video, pictures and GPS coordinates of the exact areas of damage, which is a royal pain. And that's why it took them five days just to go out and capture pictures, video and document the location. Then they had to, then she had to come back and put everything in a spreadsheet. With this type of, of technology, it'll record it. So, and it's, it's more than just FEMA. But this would be a very helpful tool in improving productivity and efficiency in Roden Bridge. But then, let's see here, yeah, they took approximately four hundred and fifty pictures and videos. So it, it, it's a lot of documentation that has to be done when the damage is there. And that's probably why a lot of counties didn't get on board on this, I'm assuming anyway, because they didn't have any documentation of the damaged roads because they've already fixed them. So that's where with, I guess my experience dealing with that one in nineteen, they were stringent. You have to have pictures, documentation of the damage or you're not going to get no, no, no FEMA assistance, so. So with that, with this FEMA event, it got us thinking, what would be a more efficient way of gathering this type of information? Then we met with a couple of different dash camera companies to learn more about their products. One of the companies offered a free trial and that's where we're currently at. This next slide. Our free trial includes three GPS devices, four front and rear facing cameras and two panic buttons. The panic buttons allow drivers to alert field managers in the event of an emergency or risk, high-risk scenarios. When pushed, the button immediately sends an alert to managers with video captured footage. And the picture is in the overview screen that shows where all equipment is currently located. On this slide here, you can see where number seventy-five and number thirty-eight was and in motion. The two circle dots show equipment that has been parked. So you see where they're parked at the yard down there, then number seventy-five's in motion. Again, these are just kind of like screenshots, so. With this next slide, from the same overview screen, you can click on, on one unit specifically to see all routes that equipment traveled that day. In the upper left-hand corner of the map, there's three icons. The icon, the top icon lets you know when a vehicle is stopped and it gives a location of duration and for how long that piece of equipment has stopped for. The orange icon indicates a harsh event that we will discuss further. And the play button will show you the trip and all routes taken that day. Another feature on mapping, the equipment is a proximity map. As seen in the screenshot, you can search by specific road and day to see what equipment was in the area. This feature could be very beneficial when we have residents call, express concerns, concerns about their roads, not just during snow removal, but for just routine maintenance. It basically documents, yes, we were out there, this is what we were doing, so. So we'd be able to quickly respond to residents to let them know when a piece of equipment was last on the road. Next slide kind of shows the benefits, some of them, the improved fleet maintenance. With that, Jeremy, you can sound off too. With that fleet maintenance, it tracks oil changes, you know, all different kinds of maintenance to all this equipment. And it'll send a message to alert the shop supervisor, hey, this, this truck's due for an oil change, this truck. So it automatically tracks that to where it's going to be more efficient, especially for the, the shop. And if there is error codes that pop up on a piece of equipment, some of the time, the, the operator calls into the shop and said, hey, this, my, my light's on, what do I do? Well, the shop supervisor don't know, well, you need to shut it down or bring it back to the shop. Normally it's shut it down, he'll come out and look at it and then, oh, it's fine, it's just this, this sensor's malfunction. You can go ahead and operate it for the day. So that time lost there, waiting for the shop supervisor to drive all the way out there to either say, yeah, continue driving it or no, shut it down, we have to have it hauled in. So there's a lot of, there's multiple things that is going to improve the flow of efficiency down there by going to something like this, so. Improved gravel road maintenance and then snow and ice events. So just to basically prove what we're tracking. I probably touched on some of this already, but it's real-time monitoring, GPS mapped for each piece of equipment that these devices are put into and records routes driven. I've already talked about that stuff, you know, ensuring snow routes are not doubled up on. Because when, I think this next slide shows.
You'll see it.
Okay, anyway, we got a slide that kind of shows you the form that we have to fill out. It's a paper sheet that when operators get sent out, they write down, they were, this time, they were on this road doing snow removal. That takes a lot of time for a driver to stop at two o'clock in the morning if they forget to or if they just wait till the end of their shift and go, yeah, I was doing this, I was doing that. It's just a, a pain, you know, especially on the operator. When you have something like this in, in place, it will do the tracking for us, so.
I think that is good. I just don't want them to think that we're, you know, who, who put forward this was, is to, you know, spy on them. But I think it will make their job a little bit easier and also easier to track what all is.
We've, we've already, we've already been, I don't want to say went through it, but we've already felt some of the repercussions. And that's why we're, you know, I think if we do go forward with this, we're approved to do so. The rear-facing camera, I don't, I'm not in favor of that. You know, what it would prove, that are they using their cell phone, are they buckled up?
Sure.
Are they attentive when they're driving? So, you know, there's benefits to both scenarios.
Oh, yeah, I totally agree, yeah. I just, I remember when we got the, the dash cams that was part of it, it was back in the nineties. Oh my gosh, everybody was so mad, but they're the best thing. I mean, I think they've saved off of their, you know, with them.
Right, right.
And I think that's kind of getting that primary focus on this deal with Public Works. It is not solely intended to track employees. I mean, it's all these. It is not solely intended to track employees. I mean, it's all these other benefits. That's what brought the whole idea to the board. It wasn't, okay, we need to track our employees.
Sure.
Into this, that was the last thing on our mind when we got started into this, but it does have all the capabilities of doing that as well.
And it helps the employees be efficient.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Cause you're trusting your employees to go out and do what you said. Oh, you're hauling rock from this quarry to this stockpile all day long.
Yeah.
Well, does he spend thirty minutes on the side of the road every two hours?
You don't know.
Don't know. So it's it's one thing to where, yeah, it's probably gonna make them do their job, so.
Yeah.
As well.
Crashes, you know, having that monitor, I think that, I mean, that would be, especially if there's people see, oh, they're trying to hit me.
The 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 next slide would crack you up. Um, it it also monitors, uh, harsh driving events, you know, crashes, uh, acceleration, you know, harsh turns, harsh brake, uh, policy violations, whether no seatbelt, smoking, eating, drinking, uh, collision risk, uh, distracted driving, traffic signals, stop signs, speeding. Um, we could set alerts to where, like on speeding, if we could set it to where if they go five mile an hour over the speed limit, we'll get notified. So, or if they don't stop at a stop sign, we'll automatically get notified. So, um, it it's, uh, harsh events are basically emailed to us or be alerted on a mobile app through this program here. Um, but, uh, the video of the rolling stop, uh, where we was alerted on is shown on the next slide. And this is just what it's gonna show.
California.
Eleven mile an hour. So that's just, you know, an example. To I think Thomas wanted to make sure it really worked, but it doesn't. Then again, uh, with maintenance alerts, a piece of equipment were to experience mechanical issues, and I kinda went through this a little earlier. Uh, that way we can determine whether to either shut the unit down or, uh, proceeded to go, so. Screenshots of some diagnostics. Um, I ain't gonna bore you with all that stuff, tells you what the depth level is and so on and so forth, oil pressures, engine speed, um, so on and so forth. This is a big one on me, idling events. Um, um, I get really, I don't wanna say really mad when people just let their vehicle idle for no flipping reason, but I always say, is your starter broke? I understand some of our equipment, you got lights on them that run all the time if you're out on the roadway. So every hour, go start it up, let it run for five minutes, shut it back off, charge the battery back up. Um, but, uh, idling events can cost a lot of money in the long run. And I know when I first started with Gary County, there'd be guys out wherever they were flagging traffic and a dump truck sitting in the ditch running all day long. And I got on my little soapbox, and I'm like, shut it off. I mean, that's a waste. And this whole scenario we have here, uh, on the idling events, uh, Kaylin, correct me if I'm wrong, but this was just for from April twenty ninth through May twenty ninth, since we've been using this, uh, this trial. There was four pieces of equipment that that was, uh, basically getting recorded. And so from five thirty one, uh, basically last Friday, the cost of diesel was two dollars and seventy six cents a gallon. You multiply that by your nine point five gallons, that is, uh, twenty six dollars and twenty two cents of just idling for all people, all four combined. So if you take that over the entire fleet, the entire month, the entire year, if we do better better monitoring, we're gonna save money on the back end of things, so. And I understand you're gonna have to have some equipment idle, um, just depending on the scenario you're in, but um, that's one of my fortes is if if, uh, the starter's not broke, shut it off.
And this just goes along with the idling thing, so this is another report you can pull.
Yeah, yeah, this is basically a, each vehicle listed separately on each idle time, and it's got the exact, it's got the exact, you know, fuel we used estimated right there, so with the amount of time that was the duration of the idling events. So there's one down there, I don't know, number seventy nine, it idle for seventeen minutes, twenty one seconds, the next one about twenty minutes. So what were they doing? So it's. Improved county maintenance, track gravel road maintenance, uh, more effectively. Uh, it's gonna help us monitor, and, uh, by documenting their road maintenance as it's being performed, storm events. The technology would allow us to record road conditions before, during, and after. Uh, ideally, this would give all information needed, uh, for these events to request, then receive financial reimbursements assistance like through FEMA or KDN. Snow and ice events, uh, we could tell drivers where trucks have previously traveled, so we don't have to unnecessarily overlap in coverage. Um, better communication.
And that's just an example of our current snow sheet, so they have to write down when they started and landed and what road they went on, so we could eliminate that.
Yes. That that, we we have to document that stuff, and if we have this program in place, it's gonna improve efficiency because they're not stopped alongside the road, document what time they just got done doing riffle road. Um, they can just go and do their job, they don't have to worry about stopping to log to log what time they did it, so. And, uh, future for Public Works, um, as of right now, we're interested in this technology and see it, see the benefits from utilizing these. Uh, currently, we are only interested in the forward-facing cameras and the GPS trackers. Uh, K Camp has verified that they do not, uh, rate differently. It's where it'll affect our premiums for vehicle dash cameras or GPS. Um, but they did state that this could be part of the yearly risk avoidance grant. The Public Works could pro could propose to the committee, uh, to submit our dash cameras for reimbursement, and the amount available for twenty twenty five would be two thousand dollars, so. Um, they will qualify for that, so. We have an estimated cost, uh, for this technology, including, to be included in our twenty twenty five budget proposals, and, uh, that'll affect, um, Public Works noxious weed and waste disposal budgets.
I like technology. Do you guys have a backup plan in case technology goes wrong?
Well, they have, I'm sure they have, uh, service.
Yeah, I'm sure that they will, institutions. I think when we move forward, we always have to have that.
Yeah, they're.
Yeah.
Best of swampy at some point.
Mm-hmm. And both we've kind of looked at, with the two companies we've met with, they don't charge extra for technology assistance or anything like that, so what we would pay would be included in the technical assistance.
Sure. A couple more things. Uh, just bring, just bring you guys up to speed with yesterday thunderstorm events, flash flooding. Uh, we started at six AM, uh, we was done for the day at four thirty. Uh, we had six employees in total, not for the entire duration from six to four thirty, but uh, throughout the day, there were six employees total that came in, uh, State Lake Road. I forgot, I forgot. Take those passes back. Just wanted to kinda show you guys an example of what State Lake Road looked like after yesterday's flash flood event. Uh, there was a culvert washed out, um, not completely, but um, you can see the old, the second page will actually show the culvert that got washed out. And by looking at that, Roden Bridge sometime in the past put a crossroad pipe in, and you can see the walls of the original, uh, probably box culvert, stone box culvert that was there, and they just reduced the size of that hydrology quite a bit. So, which I ain't saying that is the cause why the road washed out there, but that'd be kinda my thinking. Box looks a lot bigger than the culvert does.
Yeah.
Um, but anyway, there were subtle areas of road rock, and all that was repaired and reopened yesterday. Uh, Jay Hill Road, top, they had some of that four-inch ditch liner that they'd just gotten putting in there washed out on the road, which they got all that cleared off and reopened yesterday. Uh, but basically, most of the roads, if not all of them, had some type of flash flood where it washed the rock off the road in sections four yesterday, basically southwestern Gary County. Um, so the only road we left closed was Kansas Falls Road, which that's that same beast we fought back in twenty nineteen, where there's a crossroad pipe there, and it's just overwhelmed, and it goes over the road, washes the whole thing out, so. Um, I think in the future, the the hydrology's not right. It's for that little pipe, and just downstream of it, we've got a triple-barrel concrete box going underneath West Lions Creek Road. I mean, the hydrology's way off. I don't know if something changed upstream, but I know twenty nineteen, every time we turned around, it was washed out, so. But I think in the future, that one, there needs to be ear tag to either vacate the road from there back to the the east end or, um, um, put in a low water crossing. Like I said, it's, I'm telling Thomas to make sure everything's documented in case FEMA comes back or KDN comes back and asks if we have any road damage. We got road damage we can produce, so. Um, any comments about the questions on yesterday's flooding events?
No, um. I had some people reach out to me, but it's unbeknownst to me to guess where they're on top of it better, but.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um. I thought it'd be best if I brought this to the commission's attention, but we've had a, uh, this is on the landfill brush, a commercial brush. We have had, um, one contractor, I'm not gonna mention no names, um, but they were months behind. They didn't pay their March or April. Uh, they signed the contract February one, I believe. Um, and in that contract, it basically states that if they're delinquent in payment, they're gonna be assessed a late fee, and they need to basically pay, and if they get, they're not supposed to use the commercial dump as well for the trees. Well, this contractor was, uh, witnessed. Uh, we've got documentation and photos that they were using it after they were notified that they were late, and, uh, they still, they have paid everything up to date. Their their fees, their late fees plus their user fee, but they are refusing to pay their fines. So, and it's noted in the contract they signed that every time they go onto that place and dump, it's five hundred bucks. So they're into this for twenty five hundred dollars, and they're digging their heels in, so. Um. So, just letting you know, and I'm, I don't want, to me, it's set in the contract that they signed, that if they basically dump illegally, it's five hundred bucks every time. They signed it, so.
Yeah, I'll talk to Betsy and see what what our options are at one time. He's trespassing.
Unless I'm, I think since he got the certified letter from me that said you're temporarily banned from using the transfer station or and the, uh, um, landfill, um, they haven't been out there from what I've been made aware of, so. Um, but.
Yeah, he's not paying his fines, he's not paid up.
He's not paid up.
To me, that's the whole point, is to make them accountable.
Yep.
And.
Well, you can't let one get away.
No.
You don't wanna get that started.
No, no, but I thought I'd bring that to your attention, so that way you're fully aware of what might come down the pipe. With that, that's all I had.
Well, thank you.
Sorry, it makes it sound like it's not very much.
Well, it just proves that we're not bored.
Nobody ever says you're bored, do they? I've never heard anybody say that.
It's nonstop.
Nonstop.
Oh, so you want, you guys want to move that exhibit?
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's gonna be.
There we have. Yes.
Come home down with fries.
Sarah Fries.
So I've never commented on a, in a county meeting, do I have to?
State your name.
Okay, my name is Kimberly Bradley. Hi.
Hello.
Hi. Hello. Um, so I am here, uh, because last week I filed for the, um, county clerk as a Democratic candidate, and I filed by petition. Um, unfortunately, I relied on some bad information, and so I was seven uh, signature short of, um, qualifying my petition. But when the county clerk's office went through my petition, there were a couple of names that were eliminated that, um, kind of concerned me. Um, some of the people were eliminated because they said their signature did not, um, match the voter registration card information. Um, as a matter of fact, of the twenty that were negated, eight of those were for that reason. So, it was suggested that perhaps I come to you guys and explain that, so.
Um, so did they show you the the signature that was, uh, negated due to that?
No, I did not ask for that information at the time.
So there, so you don't even see, you didn't get to see the signature that?
That was not offered to me, no.
I'm not.
Do we have, Teresa, is that accessible to her?
But it's public knowledge, I believe. I believe it's public knowledge, but I mean, that would have to be something that would have to be asked, cause, I mean, you know.
Do you have the, do you have the certified, um, petition that you looked at?
I do, and she has a.
I have a copy of it also.
I know, but showing that which ones were negated.
Right, and she has that as well.
Oh, and it shows that?
Well, it just shows that they, it has an N next to it, identifying it as not matching the registration.
Do you have, so I would like to see the comparison of what was negated and what, cause I I have a concern because I, as an independent, that's the only way I can file, so, um, so, yeah, I just, cause I mean.
I will say that, um, in our office, there were three staff members that reviewed the petition versus the standards and all signatures. We have Republicans and Democrats, and I was not a part of that process at all.
And and nobody's saying that.
I know, I'm just saying, just so Kim knows. Um, and all the ones that were not accepted were all with that consensus, so. Um, Kim, if you would like to come in, we can.
No, I wanna be personally.
My concern is that.
Can I see your?
Certainly, some of these people, I personally registered to vote when I was working on the pit bull ban. Um, so I know that they signed, um, they did sign using, um, kspots.org, which is an online um, registration, so it is perhaps, it's not matching that, but, um. So if there's an N on there, that means that you can't certify that that signature? Is that what that means?
The N would be signature-based or that the name or.
Okay, cause it said, well, I'd like to say, okay, I wanna see this one, cause it says Courtney R. Lee, and then it's got C. Lee on there.
I'm pretty sure.
Well, I'd like for you to go pull the voter registration card so I can see it. Cause I wanted, I wanna see what, I wanna see, I'm concerned because I can't file if you're being nitpicky on signatures.
It's not nitpicky.
Okay, well.
Makes off of the standards from the.
Okay, well, I I'd like to see, cause I think it is a concern.
Okay.
How many, how many, uh, uh, people would have filed by petition so far this week?
Keith, Krista, Kelly. Wow. Or Eric.
I'd like to see all of their petitions, actually. I think we all have.
Did you? No, I didn't, no.
No, he didn't.
My my petitions were lost. We're not gonna, that's.
And there's another one.
I mean, because if.
Robert Bailey, and he signed, his signature was Bailey Robert, and it has an N on it.
And it, when I looked at the the comments, it says that the last name of the signature must be spelled identically to the registration card. The signature is insufficient if it contains initials which are not consistent with the name or initials on the registration card. So we have, and there was one person who it looked like they did, they just signed their first name, but again, it's a signature, so it could be there, and I just don't see it.
And Betsy, I I I mean, you can't read my signature. I mean, there's no way that anybody can read my signature. I I I I have scribble, I I have always been that a way, and I I I mean, I'm concerned, cause this is the only way I can file for office. I I I don't have an option if I don't have enough, so I I feel that this is an issue.
And there is another person on there who has dementia, who I'm sure her signature has changed over time as her disease has progressed.
And Margie Stewart.
Yeah.
I mean, I can read her handwriting. It says on there. I mean, how do we peel that? I mean, you know, if there's.
Well, I mean, technically, it didn't qualify because I was seven short, but.
That's her signature, Courtney.
She didn't see Lee.
Yeah.
Courtney, which is the signature on the voter registration.
Yeah, but the comments say that they can use, it says the signature is insufficient if it contains initials which are not consistent with the name or initials on the registration card.
I wasn't verifying her, um, the petition, so you wouldn't want to call in Teresa Dana and.
Well, actually, I wanna see everybody who's who's filed a petition. I'd like to see their petitions. Let me get those, so we can all look at them, please. Because here's Margie Stewart, I mean, and she's not a real lady.
Right, right, and I will say that the Secretary of State's office said that I didn't even have to verify this petition because she didn't turn it enough in the beginning, and.
Yeah, I'm not contesting that. What I'm concerned is some of these people sign my petition, and it's, in a way, you're negating their preference or whoever did it.
Is it also shown in their voter registration record that they signed your petition, so I mean.
If if it shows in their voter record that she signed the petition, how is it not counted then?
No, if it's accepted or rejected. It will not say if it's accepted or rejected, but either way, it'll state that it was done.
What is on Vote Builder mean?
That's, I put that in there. Those are people that they say are not registered as Democrats, but according to what I find on Vote Builder, which is a database that the state sells to the Democratic Party, that person was registered as a Democrat.
If you guys wanna look at that, if you could get those, um, everybody else's petitions on there, because I'd like to see them. Please.
As far as like a third party, I, I don't know what to tell you on that. Because I can just go off of what our Secretary of State's office, our database, and.
Right, that's what I'm saying, that they buy that from the state, the Secretary of State's office.
Yeah, I'm not sure why that would be different.
There's a what?
Objection period. It's only three days. Could you get those other petitions, please? I can clearly read those, and it's her handwriting.
Yeah, I mean. When you have multiple people, multiple people filed by petition, I don't think you wanna run into the situation of not being able to, because I know there's someone running for sheriff who always thinks.
Well, I know, because that's the only way that, that, you know, I can file is my petition. I can't, if I don't have enough signatures, I can't just hit feet, so I, you know, I think that is.
This one looks like he just signed, signed first.
Some people just put X on their signature.
Yeah, and sometimes what happens is when you're standing there, you're talking to them, and they have the petition, so I couldn't always see how they were filling it out. So that was an error on my part, you know, not verifying that they were doing it exactly as they were supposed to.
I'm sorry that this happened, Kim.
That's okay, I still was able to file. It's just that it does concern me that some of these people are, you know, especially those people who said, who who the office says that their signature does not match their card, because what happens when they come to vote? Is that going to then invalidate their vote? Thank you.
I gotta move around, my bag. You gotta loosen up the screws. Okay. I don't know who.
Yeah, I don't know who. I, I, I'm not saying that you're even breaking the rules, I just don't know if we're, if that is correct on how we're doing that, because this is clear, Courtney Lee's clearly, that is her signature. I, I understand that, and I know that, I just, I feel like any, is that, would you read that top initial part? I haven't read that. Well, you hear Jamie Farr sign this and just put Jay Farr on there, and you counted on this one. I, I, there's not consistency here. There's Jennifer, J. Farr. They both signed Jay Farr, and it was, and it was counted. Chris Robbs, CR, that was counted. No consistency there.
Which petition are you on?
Crystal Lee's house. Then you have Jason Butler, he was, he did Jay Butler, you did not, you did not. Well, I, I.
I appreciate, I would like to say I appreciate Kim coming in, and I think we probably should have further discussion in the executive session.
Okay, I wanna see all of the petitions that have been turned in. I'd like, I probably have all of the petitions that have been turned in, Courtney. All of them, please. And I think we all need to maybe have a discussion on that, but since these are original, I could get that back to you, but I would like all, probably all, please.
Appreciate it.
34, so I actually, that's in short.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion to go on the executive session for some elector personnel? Who else is supposed to be in here for that?
Uh, Crystal is supposed to be in there.
This is the one I do post poll time of the morning?
Yes.
Yes. But, well, I was saying, and I'm not, I wasn't trying to shorten it, but I think.
Well, I know, I think it needs to get more than, yeah.
Place. In the executive session.
This is the elector personnel?
This one will be, yes.
What's it, or.
This should be, yeah, uh, Crystal, I think she.
All right.
And Tammy, for how long?
This one's only gonna take 10 minutes, then we're gonna have to come out and then go into the other ones.
Is, am I supposed to get in this one still too?
No.
Not this one?
Stuck a handy Danny new sign.
Oh, were you asking about that this morning?
I thought you had said that you had it, and I thought, oh, maybe it's already been.
No, Teresa, I don't think it's out there.
I thought it was.
I didn't even know. I wanted to get everybody's approval first, and then put it up there, but. Okay, start it.
All right. Thank you for the shot, no, I'm ready.
Anyway, fancy dancy new sign.